So I just wanted to apologize on behalf of town staff for audio visual difficulties. At this point, the meeting is not being live streamed on YouTube. However, we will upload it in the morning to our YouTube channel. The meeting is only available on Zoom live streamed. Again, I apologize about the technical difficulties. My first time trying to run the AV system and clearly I have a lot to learn from Mr. Hoagland. So anybody who is upset about the fact that there was a 30 minute delay can pin it entirely on me. So with that, I turn it over to you, Eileen.
Thanks for coming over, Scott. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Pools Project Building Committee's special meeting for... Today is Thursday, January 30th, and the time now is 6:59. Those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need to take the role. The only one missing is Carol, I think. Everybody else is present, correct? Okay.
Correct.
And would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the July 16th, 2024 meeting? It's not on, I'm sorry. Talk into it, right?
I would move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is public participation. Anyone who would like to come up and speak? We'll have the four-minute time allotment. And on Zoom, what are we gonna do? Look for raised hands or... You'll be able to see that?
If you're on Zoom, just raise your hand if you'd like to speak and we can alternate between in-person and Zoom.
There we go. Okay. Anybody like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Scott Krasowski, 46 Miami Avenue. Happy to see the pool committee is starting over. I've said this many, many times, we need a pool. I'd like to see a pool that is open year-round, not seven or eight weeks a year. This would give Parks and Recreation another revenue stream for the swim team and competitions. I was speaking to somebody from the Bristol Aquatic Center, the Norton Aquatic Center, excuse me. And they were looking at the plans and they said, "One thing was missing from the old plan, because we're planning on having swim teams use our... The pool that was proposed was a place for spectators to be for the competitions and stuff like that." So I'd like to see if we're planning on allowing swim teams in there, having some room for spectators and things like that. Splash pads. We need splash pads. I've been a fan of splash pads since my kids were young and we used to drive to Bristol and go use their splash pad over there. We don't need to go to referendum to get splash pads. I know the prior town council had plans for financing splash pads. And because of the cost of them, it was so low that they did not need to go to referendum. So let's start working on that so we can get some splash pads in town. It was mentioned at prior meetings that the current pool here on Garfield Street is almost ready to go for splash pads, that they could put splash pads in. It was already plumbed and the electricity's out there. So I'd like to see splash pads in town. But as I say, I'd like to see a pool that's open year-round, not just open seven or eight weeks a year. And we need a pool and let's see what you guys can do. It's a new start, a fresh start, and it's kind of exciting to see what we can do. We need a pool, so let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on Zoom, sorry.
Mr. Ostrinsky?
Hello, Greg Ostrinsky, 267 Audubon Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Cool. All right. Well, so my family has been in town for around three and a half years. Babies when it comes to most to attend these meetings. But as a new parent of a now two-year-old in the neighborhood, I've spent a frankly ridiculous amount of time at Mill Pond Park since moving in. I've taught my son to walk at the park, taught him to help clean by picking up litter, and taught him not to pick up goose poop, which only happened once. My wife and I, and our son, have made friends and met some amazing people at the park. But in my time there, I've seen some things that I believe could be improved. When I first heard about the Mill Pond Park Pool Project, which didn't take long after moving in, thanks to the Newington Facebook pages, I did some research on park design. One thing I've learned about and taken to heart is effective use of space. In order to see if a space is used effectively, you watch it, take note of the park as a whole, and take notice of how it is being used. In all my time taking note over the course of the last several years, I have never once seen people using the area along Garfield Street, save for the town daycare play area and the weekend of the extravaganza. Even when events are held, such as the cornhole tournaments, they steer well clear of Garfield Street. This area could be utilized so much more effectively than a grass lawn that's nothing more than 360 days of the year. That's why I am in favor of the pool location along Garfield Street. One thing I believe that would improve the park is an area for sitting and reading, or spreading out a blanket and sharing some cheese and crackers with friends and family. The current location of the pool would serve that purpose well. At the moment, the pool is required to keep the area flat, resulting in a pretty heavy slope down to the pond and making the area by the pool ill-suited for any gatherings of more than a few people. Not only that, but the current pool partially blocks the view of the pond, which I will note you can absolutely see from the playground path. Removal of the pool and bathhouse would give the park and playground a greater atmosphere of open space than they have now. However, I'm sorry, however much I supported the previous pool plan, it wasn't without its faults. The largest issue I noticed was the location of the splash pad. Previously, it was located directly abutting Garfield Street, and I believe it would be safer to move it closer to the pathway and center of the park away from the road. The other issue is how the area where the pool is now was not emphasized. A new plan should absolutely make that a noted detail if the pool were to move locations. I also believe the abutters of the park, those who will be most affected by the move, should be consulted heavily and offered buffers if they choose. They should not halt the entire process, but it is important to do what we can to mitigate the impacts they may face. Ultimately, I do believe the choice to move the pool to Garfield Street would result in a more effective use of space and more welcoming park as a whole. And so I am hopeful that that aspect of the plan will stay. I do want to emphasize, however, that we need to not let perfect be the enemy of good. If we continue to argue and refuse to compromise, we will continue to have a leaky pool and more Facebook arguments that go nowhere, which, save for a few people, nobody likes.
Thank you.
Hi, Rose.
Hi. Rose Science, 46 Elton Drive. Year six of this discussion or more coming back. I'm not quite clear if I heard right with Mr. Ostrinsky mentioning about a buffer area around the park. If I'm not mistaken, I think that there's good buffer area around it right now. Because I know people that lived adjacent to the park. And where the wooded area is, I think it's actually town land. I mean, that's just something I'm sure that surveyors would know about, but I'm sure that Mr. DeMaya will know about as well. Going forward, I hope more than the same old same old are here. Those that are behind the keyboards on Facebook, front and center, come say what you have to say. I look forward to some meaningful dialogue back and forth with everybody. And I'm hoping that we really can come up with something for this town because it really is needed. I was 13 years old when that pool was built and I'll be 80 this year, good Lord willing. So let's do something, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, we're gonna take somebody on the phone. Next caller is Colleen. Colleen, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. Colleen Kelly at 20 Harold Drive. There's a couple of things that concerned me the most on the last pool initiative. And I just want to emphasize that we really need to have transparency. Parking was a big issue and is a big issue, so that really needs to be vetted out appropriately. And I agree with the last caller, I think his name was John, that the people surrounding the park really need to have a separate meeting to discuss, you know, the changes that may occur to the park. That's probably it for now, so thank you.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, Dana Havens, 113 Stoddard. Wait, do we even have to do that for this meeting? Anyways, I just wanted to kind of agree, disagree with the first caller. The baseball field definitely isn't getting used, but that's because maintenance hasn't been done on it. And it doesn't need to be a baseball field because they did have plans for frisbee football and stuff like that, which I think is probably more appropriate than having baseballs flying through the field. And I also think that, yes, there is some homes do have some of a buffer. They do have some trees, but a lot of them, the trees are gone and it's wide open. And I also, Rose, sorry, but I don't agree with you. Not everybody can make it out, especially when the meeting starts around dinnertime. So as long as they're on, watching through Zoom or watching the next day and keeping up with it, I'm good with that.
Thank you. Do you have another Zoom caller? No? Okay, go ahead.
She did that on purpose.
Good evening. Steve Ellis, 105 Robbins. First want to thank you guys all for serving on the committee. I know this has been a challenging for all of you. So thanks for continuing to serve. The first thing, I agree with Scott. I think I'd like to see us have a year-round pool. I think that'd be something that we should at least investigate. The Garfield location, I think that's terrible. I spent a lot of time there this past November. And the way people drive through there is insane. And the bus traffic, also very dangerous, buses trying to back into their spots and everything. And then in addition to that, we're gonna have probably a library renovation going on, which is gonna screw up the parking that's already there. But I saw the daycare people crossing those children across that street every day. And it really scared the hell out of me, to be honest with you. And I just pity any family. I raised my kids here. They all learned how to swim here. And many days dragging my kids out of the car and over to the pool. I'm glad I didn't have to cross any streets, dragging all the stuff and the kids in tow. So the last thing I actually I'd ask is just, maybe we just consider first what we need. The splash pads are nice, but are not necessary. So I'd ask that we first consider what we need. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Nobody answering. Okay, we're done. That's good. We don't have any old business to discuss. We need to come up with a 2025 working plan. I think we have to start at the beginning. And that will be the beginning of our working plan is to start from scratch and work from the ground up and start all over again. So part of that is gonna be involve hiring a new architect. There are a group of four, I believe, architectural firms that are vetted by the town already that seems to be a good place to start and look at. Some of them have some very good experience with pools. That's what their expertise is at. Hopefully, maybe by next meeting, we could have somebody come in and give a little presentation, tell us what they want to do, what they can do, what their expertise area is, and maybe we could start there and move on. The other thing we need to do is come up with a calendar of meeting dates. Yes?
Out of those four, are you saying that some of those have experience with parks and pools? All of them do or some of them do?
I know two of them do. I don't know about the other two. I wasn't able to find anything on their sites, but that doesn't mean they don't. You know what I mean?
So to clarify, you want me to reach out to one of them and say, or both of them or all of them that have pool experience and for them to...
If they're interested in a pool project, come in and give us a little...
Well, I for one would not be interested in looking at anybody who doesn't have any experience with pools.
Correct.
I think, can we get just a list of all four so we could vet them ourselves? And then when we come back, then collaboratively, we could decide on which one to go with?
Yeah, so maybe I just reach out to... It's, I think it's three technically that we have on retainer. And we just, I can just ask the three of them for like a list of their experience designing pools, a couple, you know, some pictures and things like that. We can look at those and then based on that, maybe select, you know, one that we'd want to engage for this.
Okay. That sounds good.
Well, I think, I think I'd rather, rather than select one, I'd like to get the information. And we should then have them come in and give a presentation of... This is a big, a big job.
Yes, it's a big job. Yes.
I'd want to compare one or two, if there's two or three, I'd want to compare them. I want them to tell me what they can do for me. I don't want to just say, "Oh, I'll take you off" based on what I get from them. I want, I want to see what, I want them to tell me what they can do for us based on what's gone in the past and what's going now.
But isn't that, I mean, we don't, we don't haven't come to a consensus of what we want.
Well, I think that's the other problem. We need some kind of consensus.
I think before we bring somebody in, we really should say, you know, is the plan to just say, you know, "We want two pools and two splash pads." Or we want to look at putting up a structure that's an indoor pool all year? Because, you know, they can come in and present pictures, but if I...
No, I don't think that it's necessarily possible for them to come in with any kind of, you know, "Ooh, this is what it is." I think we need to look at their experience and to say, "This is what they've done. This is what we're capable of doing. This is where our experience lies." And I don't think we know what we want until someone starts from the ground up and says, "Okay, let's do the borings. Let's figure out where the pool can go. Let's look at Churchill and say, 'What's that shape in? Where do we want to begin? Where's the best place to start? If we're gonna start from the bottom up, we need to start from the bottom up.'" Yes, no? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, I think someone, this committee was originally designed to look at both pools and see what the condition is for both pools. So we need someone to do the condition for both pools, not, not just the one.
Right.
I mean, we're looking at, I don't want to get in the mindset of building a pool at Garfield or at Mill Pond. We're looking at the aquatic... So yeah, so we probably shouldn't have like a plan that we make because then we're gonna get tunnel vision on whatever. I think it's, we promise, we get tunnel vision, we want this here, we want this here. But we need to look at the whole overall picture. Come in, we tell them that we have these two pools.
Right. This is the land we own. This is what we want, we want to, we need an aquatic facility somewhere. Look at what we have. Take a look at what the shape's in. What's your best suggestion about what we can do with the assets that we have? And what can we do with the best assets, you know, with the assets that we have? And what's your recommendation? That's, it seems fair. I don't think we can go in with, you know, be... Because we don't know.
Yeah, we're not experts at all. No, it's your expert.
If we start all over again, we don't know. And I don't...
Are we, I mean, the question is, are we, are we gonna ask these guys, say, "Okay, we want two pools and two splash pads?" I mean, is...
That's something that I think we'd have to take a vote on personally. My opinion is if we go to the town and say we want two pools and two splash pads, we don't stand a chance.
I think if you can bring it at the same price, you could.
Well, what do you mean, the same price for each one?
No. You don't, you know, we don't need a climbing wall. We don't need another, you know, Taj Mahal clubhouse.
What price are you talking about?
Two pools and two splash pads were under $12 million or whatever it was. They don't have to have all the bells and whistles, right?
We got the will of the market for that.
I, I don't know, but I mean, that's, you know...
We could, we could tell them that we just want a basic across the board. We're just trying to maintain, fix, or whatever their analysis is. That's fine with me. I don't, I, the extras can come. That could be like the last thing that we think about.
Plan for the extras, right? Then maybe do them later. If you have to build a concrete pad a little bigger, you do that.
I think you're a swimmer. I'm a swimmer, you know. The kids aren't gonna come to the pool without some sort of bell or whistle there.
I'm not saying it doesn't have to have all the bells.
No, it doesn't have to have them all, but I think at the very least, you know, you need a diving board. You need something that's appealing for, to make kids want to come. That was a big attraction, the diving board, right? The big attraction was the high dive, but we don't have to have that. But I think we need something there, you know, something that's a fun thing for kids to do other than get wet.
And we should have the pool open, you know, more than business hours. Is the pool open after 5 o'clock?
Yes.
So I, I don't swim, as you can tell by the shape. But I, how, I don't even know what the pool hours are. That's how much I've used the pool. I mean, I know the bulk of the day is taken up with the daycare. Right? And it's the whole thing. So I mean, when do residents get to use the pool that they're gonna swim?
Residents can use the pool anytime it's open. Just because the camp kids are there doesn't mean that the residents can't come. They can come anytime. And it's open in the evening as well.
I don't, I don't think that's a true statement. I don't think the parents, I don't think the citizens can use it when the pool is being used by the campers.
Yes, they can.
The pool, the pool hours are 1:00 to 4:45, and then again from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. during the week.
They used to have swimming lessons in the morning, if I remember correctly, but that's not open swim time for the public. That's just swimming lessons. That's in the morning, 1:00, in the afternoon, the camp uses it, but the public can go there as well. They close for dinner hour. And then in the evening, there's no camp there, but it's just free swim for the public.
But regardless, the question is, we need to look at all of our, all of our facilities and what can we get for all of our facilities? And I think we can sell it to the town if we say, "Here's what we have. Here's the pot of money we have, and here's what we can do." I think the problem with, in previous times, we've gone with tunnel vision. We want to build this here and, and we aren't gonna think of anything else with anything else because we'll worry about that later. Well, the town wants us to look at everything it wants. If we're talking about a facility that can be used year-round, then that's something we'd have to sell to the town year-round. But that's, that wouldn't include us doing anything else with anything, any of other pools. It would be one pool at one location, and that would be something we'd have to sell to the town, to people who are gonna put the bill. And we'd have to then explain why that's important. But I think we certainly need to get somebody in here that can, can look at all the pools and all the, and all the issues that go with that. We can't, we can't say we're gonna build a pool here and we'll worry about parking later because that's, that's, that's not right, not the right way to go. We can't say we're gonna build it here and worry about what the neighbors think later on. We can't do it that way. We can't say we're gonna build a pool here and worry about the rest of the park later on. You can't do it that way. You have to figure out what the ramifications are for the whole thing and do the whole process together. And I think that's what we're, what we're charged with. That's what we're charged with originally, and that's what we're charged with now again.
So we are in consensus in saying what we're looking for, for our next meeting is someone to come in who has experience with pools, who would be willing to talk to about us, about what they could do in terms of looking at the land space we have available and what, are they qualified? Are they, they have the experience necessary to look at the land, examine it, and see what they could offer us in terms of...
Well, and look at the pools, that are various, what the condition there. And I would say that if the ones we have on staff or on retainer aren't, they don't, they just do pools on the side, then I would maybe want to get somebody who does pools for a full-time job.
Can I, can I back up here? I mean, I think we have the luxury of time here. I don't think there's like, it's something like we have an April timeline, we, deadline we have to meet. So I think, I think we're kind of should be operating or you should, the committee should be operating on the, on the, "Let's do it right, not fast." And yes, it's true that we have these design firms or architecture firms on retainer. And, but those are for things that need a quick turnaround. We use those, for example, for the OFI design where we really were up against the wall as far as getting the design submitted to the state so we could get that, the grant money. In this case, you know, the population of potential architectural firms that have experience in, in pools, that are experts in this kind of stuff and work with municipalities, we don't really know. And the overlap between those three that we have on retainer and the whole universe may or may not overlap. So I would think that what you want to do to start with is just do another RFP. And then you can, from that, you can get proposals for, okay, how would I, as an architect, go about determining all of these various factors? Location, best location, best, most efficient cost, the most, the kind of design elements of a bathhouse or not, or a splash pad or not, all of those things. And then we could involve them in the process of, whether it's, you know, public participation or the same kind of design work or planning work that, for example, we're doing at the town center, get the input of residents so that we have something that has the most sort of consensus-building approach, rather than rushing it out and just saying, "Oh, yeah, you know, on week one, we like this firm designed something for us." Does that, does that general idea sound like kind of a strategy?
That's fine. I am aware that there is at least one firm of that group who is very knowledgeable in the pool area, not...
Yeah, and we would send the RFP to them too.
Yeah, they would give a chance.
There's one that's, I believe, they're...
TOB, right?
No.
Not TOB?
No, it was somebody else.
So I mean, what I can happily do is work with like, you know, the Parks and Rec Department and Lauren, Lauren Ryan, this is who's our purchasing manager, and get the skeleton of an RFP for consideration by the commission at the next, at the next meeting. That's, that's definitely doable. Give us a month for that and we'll have something, you know, close to street-ready.
In this RFP, are we giving them any kind of guidelines? Any kind of budget?
Well, I...
Kind of, all right, this is what exactly we're looking for? Or is it, it would be nice, I agree that we need public input as to what people are really looking for because everybody, the people who are here the most are gonna say what they want. But I want to hear what everybody wants. How do we go about doing a survey?
Well, I think that's, that's, I mean, to your first question about like the budget. I mean, I think that's, you need, in the RFP, you need to give some background, saying, you know, "There was a referendum last year for an $11.7 million, this, that, and the other thing. You know, it failed, it was whatever, 52 to 48, whatever the vote was." You know, that gives, I think, the architect a sense of, okay, so we probably want to keep it below that number for start, for starters. Then we probably want to, you know, that's kind of the largest sandbox we could be playing in. And I think then that would be the basis for them drafting a proposal, just a general idea of how to proceed. And then based on, you know, whether the winning firm, that, that number could be, for at $7 million, you get this. At $9 million, you get this. You know, those kind of things. But yeah, right off the bat, you wouldn't say, "We have X million dollars to play with, design it." It's more like their design would be crafted around the budget that would be available based on feedback from the commission as well as obviously the public.
Plus, we don't know what we have to spend.
Right. That's exactly it, yeah.
That's the other problem.
And if you built, you know, so they, the town came back and said, "Yeah, we want an indoor pool." That's not gonna be $12 million. So...
Probably a lot more than that.
Yeah. We could flip the basement of OFI.
Okay, okay, so that's...
But I think, I think a reputable firm would, would look at the referendum and would look at the issues that went with the referendum and the past work. And they would know that's kind of where they're starting. Work and they, they would know that's kind of where their starting point is. They, they, they would know that, you know. Going with a pool of twenty-five million dollars would probably not fly with a referendum. If, 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 if. Eleven didn't pass, twenty-five million is not going to probably pass, so they would. Can I tell it then? And, and, and they know what to do and, 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 and they would, and I like the idea of coming, you know, I prefer. For five million, I can do this, for, for ten million, I can do this, and, and then I, then we, then we can make a decision. And then, and then, and then the, the, the public has that same information. I think the problem is, is we, we, we try to rush this and, 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 and the public sees that and then, and they, they're going to say, no. That, they're, they're going to defeat it again.
Do we need a motion to, uh, start that process?
I, I, I don't, I don't know that, yeah, I mean, I think it's more important that we get, maybe bless the R F P when it comes out. That, that would maybe a motion for that.
Right, and if that would, to become available before our meeting, can you send it out to us so we could read it beforehand?
Oh, oh, absolutely. It'd be part of the agenda for the next meeting. I mean, so long as we, you know, the, that, if that meeting's next week, the answer is no. If the meeting is next month, we could probably.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, all right, um. So. We need to come up with, um, a schedule of meeting dates. That's the next on the agenda. Um, does Thursdays work for everybody here?
This, this fourth Thursday.
The fourth, I can do the fourth Thursday of the month.
Yeah, the fourth Thursday works for me.
Okay.
Excuse me, whatever this does, well, yeah. It depends on the month, right?
Yeah. Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Right, well, yeah, right.
What's the matter?
Uh, we have, I have our, our N C T V committee meeting, which is, this, this month happened at five Thursdays.
Okay.
Right, so. Thank you.
So, so the fourth Thursday of the month is looking good for everyone that's present, yes?
No.
No, it's not. What's the third Thursday of the month?
Nope.
Well, I do Wednesday, you do.
I could do.
We have.
Fourth Wednesday.
I cannot do Wednesdays, can't do Wednesday.
Yeah, we have.
It's tough for me too.
Second, every other Tuesday's council.
I can do the fourth Monday. You do that, when you do Mondays?
Yeah, I could do the fourth.
I think I can do that too. I can do Monday.
Monday, the fourth Monday.
Start the week strong, you know.
That would be the twenty-fourth, February twenty-fourth. So that you probably do want to make a motion about is somebody moved to hold the advertised regular meetings for the fourth Monday.
I make a motion to hold the regular meetings on the fourth Monday of every month.
Second.
All in favor?
What time?
Uh.
Six thirty?
At six thirty?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I meant my second to include the six thirty.
Okay, all in favor? Post, nobody, we're good, okay.
And they'll be here in this room, right?
I, I, I will.
Confirm it. I will aim for that other, unless I, unless there's.
I just think this room is more conducive to, where we had the meetings in the last room, it was a.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll do the notice.
It was not very transparent.
Council chambers and then deal with it as there's conflicts.
Okay, sounds good. All right, do we have anything else we need to discuss? Any more public participation? Anybody on Zoom or in the meeting?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. Um, thanks, everybody, for coming back. This is a, a very tenuous situation with a, a lot of different working parts. Uh, the first thing I, I think that we need to figure out is what were the two main issues that the referendum failed? Uh, one was the cost and the second was the Garfield situation. There, there, there's not going to be any impact on, uh, the pool programs this year and there will be. There will be impact on the pool prog- programs in the future. This year Parks and Rec is going to have to pull out the Band-Aid kit and keep the pools running if they want to keep them going. So we, uh, uh, from my point of view, we have a couple of, uh, options. First thing is to. Get away from Garfield Street unless we change Garfield Street's actual physical outlay, which would require some. A whole different set of situations, um. Everybody wants to have pools, but I, being, being the worst case scenario, what happens if we don't have pools at all? Um, it would make for a poor selling point of the town, that we don't have any recreational facilities like that. But that, that would be the bottom line, is not to have pools at all. Just take them and. Turn them into grass, grassy parks. The pools haven't always been there. If you want to get, bring swimming back. Let them swim in the pond, which is really gross, but that's, that's, that's one thing to do. I prefer to have the pools placed in their current footprints, both at, uh, Churchill. And at Mill Pond, I think both, both, uh, footprints are excellent places for the pools. The, uh, as far as going out to bid for new, uh, architects. I think we should also consider all the work that it's been done over the last five years, uh, with, with our current architect. Or with the one that I, I guess we're just eliminating him altogether, um. They were, they, they did a very. Fine job as far as producing a, 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 a project that. Would go forward, building an aquatic center. Now, you guys are talking about the possibility of doing a year-round facility. Somebody said through the number twenty-five million out there, you're ta- I, I, I believe. That you're throwing out at least twenty-five million if you just want a pool. That, you know, not. Well, so, you know, Scott, Scott said, uh, grandstands and it's a place for, uh, spectators, that's, that's all great and fun. But that, if, if we did an in qua- in, in, indoor pool. Uh, at Mill Pond, it would take up a tremendous amount of space. That the, that, that would be the end of Mill Pond Park. It would be Mill Pond Aquatic Center. Somebody had posted last year, when we were talking about the Hartford Hospital property, that he, he thought it might be a good idea to. Do a school complex up there on that property if that ever becomes available. That's also a good place if we're going to do an aquatic center, that, that's going to be a, um, a tourist attraction. That would be a good, if we tie in the school, a school complex or campus. Maybe with all grades on it and a, and a, and a sports, sports center, that would be phenomenal. So there's lots of different things that you guys can talk about. I. Am strongly suggesting that we don't throw away everything and that we do take some of the things that were already talked about. And some of the proposals that I've, I've already been presented and, uh. Not start from scratch. I was one of the ones that pushed for a referendum last year. I thought that that would be the best way to actually get a feel for what the town wanted to do. We're talking, at this point. I, if we keep it under th- three million, we don't have to worry about individual projects. Or if it's a two percent or some, I don't remember what the exact numbers are. But if we keep it under three million, then we can ju- go ahead and proceed with, uh. Our individual projects, like if we want to do one pool under three million, which is. Probably about as much as you can get for three million dollars, then we could do one this year and we could do one next year. But these are all different things that we can think about. And I, 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 I was expecting. Like hundreds of people to come here tonight because hundreds of people have been complaining on Facebook last year, so. Thanks for everybody that came.
There is, there is one person on. There's what, uh, there's what person on?
There's one person on Zoom.
Colleen, on Zoom. You're next up.
Hi, thanks, um, couple of things that I'm thinking while I'm listening to everyone speak. Um, in my experience, when you do an R F P, you really should know what your project is. You need to have a better idea of. What you're looking for in order for someone to, um, you know, fill out an R F P. Um. I, I, I do agree with some of the things Bill said as far as. Looking at what you already have, what was already done and seeing. You, you know, I, I think the committee needs to decide. Are we going to do two pools? Are we going to keep it in place? Do we want to move it? I think there's got to be some kind of general consens- consensus, excuse me, consensus. Maybe do a pros and con list of everything. In order to establish what the goal, what the problem is you want to resolve, what is the goal, what is the intent? Um, and I had a thought, there was a couple cities or towns, I should say. Bristol was one and maybe it was Vernon or Tallinn. They just. Uh, upgraded or put in new pools. And if we could get some contact information on who they used, what their process was. It might be helpful just to get an understanding of the two towns that just recently went through this. Um, I think that's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello again, Skakrskowski, and the last caller actually took a lot of what I was going to say and said it. I agree that we, uh, to do an R F P, we have to have an idea of what we're going to do first. And I also agree and was going to mention Vernon, um, and Bristol. Um, I know in, in Vernon, Giuliano Pools did theirs and it was really cheap. I believe it was under two million dollars for. Uh, about the same size pool we have here in Newington. It was not a concrete pool though, it was, it was used a liner. But Giuliano Pools guaranteed the liner for the life of the, life of the, the liner, which is twenty years. So the cost of a liner over twenty years replacing it, figuring that cost is still a lot cheaper than a, a concrete pool. Uh, to answer what Bill said, um, about the pools, you know, going in disarray, we got to repair them and stuff like that. Even if the referendum passed, it would be at least two years before the project even broke ground, so. They're preparing to keep the pools running and in an email from, from Bill DeMayo, he stated that he wanted the Churchill Park. Pool to fail and he wasn't going to fix it anymore, so I don't know if that's still the plan, but, um, that's what he said in one of his emails, so. Um, we got to keep Churchill Park going. He wants it for the, you know, the summer camp and I can understand that, um. But, uh, you know, got, got a lot of work ahead of you guys. I don't, don't envy you, but. Um, take a look at all angles and, and see what's best. I think we can do very well if we, if we just look around. Um, as I say, Vernon's project came out excellent. It's a beautiful pool. I've, I've visited it twice. And I talked to them and they're very happy with the outcome. Um, but, uh, I, I, I do think you need to have an idea of what you want. First, one pool, two pools. One splash pad, two splash pads, and then go and get an R F P based on what you guys think is best for moving forward. Thank you and have a good night.
There's nobody left on Zoom.
Dana Havens, one thirteen Satterton Avenue. Um, I was disappointed and I really thought I would hear somebody bring up the aquatic engineers. Like before you go out for any R F Ps, which ditto to what Scott and Colleen said, um. I think you need to, I don't know if you want to employ a, a different company or call back the company that did the original. Study and ask them to explain it to you, but if you remember, they had three options for keeping the pool where it was. And they were significantly less expensive, even if you figured in inflation, um. Even you said to get borings done, I implore you not to re-bore these areas that were done. And to just do borings in new sections, because the closest they even got to the existing pool was near the, um. The snack shack, so maybe you do want to do a few more there, um. Also, you skipped a roll call, which is fine, except that I've gotten several messages and nobody knows who Bernadette is. So maybe you can, you know, explain that.
Maybe that's a good one.
And then I'm not a big fan of the indoor pole plan, but, um, because we have the high school one. But now I'm hearing they're talking about getting rid of the high school one and I'm thinking. Maybe we can combine line items between the town and the high school and improve that one. And that takes care of the indoor wish and the town could have more access to it. Okay, thank you. And welcome, Bernadette.
Thanks.
Rose Alliance, forty-six Elton Drive, and. I can never let Dana get the last word in, whether it be on Facebook, over the phone, a message or sitting back there with me. I didn't mean that people had to physically come down here and meet with you. I think that it's important that. People are at home with their families and I applaud, and I, are, are you Jim, by the way?
Yes.
All right, Jim, finally, nice to see you in person. He's leaving his home, his daughters and coming down here and committing to time to this project, so. Just give us some feedback. I'm a veteran of town council meetings, pool committee. This building committee, and I'm still traumatized. From these four years that I sat listening to seven schemes. And then politics changed the makeup of the committee and the ideas changed. And I'm seeing ideas being bounced around here. And I think it was two thousand and eighteen, we started with the town hall and twenty twenty, or even before that. We moved in and it was small to begin with. Of course, COVID hit. And it was okay. And here it is twenty twenty-five and we're spending three million dollars. For O F I and who knows how much more may have to go into that. I'm not one for the cheap way. I'd like to see it done and see it done correctly and I'm with Temanki. Let's find out what can we do for both pools or two splash pads or whatever. But starting from scratch and everybody kicking in their ideas back and forth. I don't know, but that, I, 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 I just don't have hopes for that. I think that what. Dana is saying is get some of the people in that have had some input into this and talk to them. With the town hall, when it failed the fir- or when the community senator failed the first time, we had. They didn't have exit interviews, but they had focus groups come in. I'm not saying you have to do that and spend more money. But everybody will have a different opinion as to why it failed and how it failed and they could blame the. Fringe radicals, they can blame the pack, they can blame the meeting, they can blame whoever they want to blame, but everybody had their own opinion. When they checked off yes or no. They had a reason why and it's just, like I say, I'm hoping. I'm hoping that we can come together and come up with something, but I have to put a plug in. For the safety on Garfield Street, because I was only here twice this summer, dropping things off. When I experienced the same thing that Mr. Ellis saw in November. A staff was crossing those children with no stop paddles, with no signs, and I was sitting there with cars behind me. Watching them come from the right, come from the left, and I don't know about anybody else, but coming up from Willard Avenue, that curve there, it's scary. And before there's a tragedy, and I know there's a community, the streetscape grant or something that we've had since two thousand and eighteen. And I understand we had to wait because we were going to change the alignment of Garfield. We had to wait because of Mazacolli Drive. It's time not to wait any longer and let's do something about it. I know the engineering department has a plan in place, but I think Santina Fis said. At one of the meetings, that that plan was going to be put in, and I know it's kind of the wrong time to be doing it now. But before you think about a pool, think about the safety of those children going over there this summer. And I know you have no control over it, but the town man.
Fair enough, good point, Russ.
Hello, everybody.
Thanks.
My name is Matthew Raddick, sixty-nine Autobahn Avenue. Um, I'm just going to pick up right where Rose left off. The safety on Garfield is a significant concern. Um, she's giving examples of people passing with the town. And that's with employees who are on duty, whose job it is to maintain the safety of the kids. To Mr. Ellis's point, that's not an example of a parent with three children or somebody who's carpooling, who's going into the backseat. To get towels or a rack of pool equipment and the kids are running out in front of them. You know, you, you simply can't have people crossing a street to get to a pool. It's going to be unsafe, no matter how you try to edit it. Um, selfishly, as we're talking about safety there. Selfishly, as we're talking about safety there, I know that it's not our perspective here as the pool, but I will just hop in real quick on it. A lot of the houses on Autobahn get a lot of noise from the town hall as it is already. The music that plays all hours of the night, cars in and out, police sirens, all that stuff. If we put in a crosswalk with audio, audio on it, just minimize that as best as possible from a neighbor's perspective. Couple of things about what we're actually here to talk about though, in the pool. First thing, I think that we need to get on the same page, especially as a committee, there's a lot of different verbiage going on between pool singular, pools plural, indoor pool, aquatic center. You know, we really need to figure out what the charge of the committee is and stick to the charge of the committee in order to make sure that we're as focused as possible with what people are talking about and that everybody's on the same page, talking about the same project. Seems like a lot of people have a lot of different goals right now. So just make sure that everybody's on the same page. Again, going to echo what people are saying about making sure that you have at least some idea of what the final product wants to look like and what the purpose of that final product is before going out to bid on anything. If you just had contractors come into your home and say, we want to put an addition on the home, you're going to get a lot of stuff that you don't need. So you need to have at least a little scope and sequence of what the project is going to be and what you're going to use it for. This is the first I'm hearing of swim meets and competitions at the Mill Pond Facility. I would implore you to talk to other towns that have facilities like that. For example, South Windsor has one town pool for the entire thing and they have a completely separate entrance for the swim meets. They have a completely separate locker room facility, completely separate pool that's separated by docking for the swim facility because those jamborees, swim meets, stuff like that brings in large crowds. They have two parking lots at the facility in South Windsor for that purpose. They bring in significant crowds, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of equipment. And a lot of people that quite frankly probably wouldn't fit at a Mill Pond location, whether it's a Mill Pond location or a Garfield location. So you really do need to understand what the pool is going to be used for in order to understand what we want to do and what we're looking for from the architects. It's also the first I'm hearing about potentially losing the high school pool. I know that that's not a Parks and Rec entity. That's a board of education asset, but I also know that the Board of Education and the Parks and Rec Department work together on a number of different projects and share resources in a number of different ways. So I would encourage you to look into how can we better collaborate with the Board of Ed to share that resource? Because an indoor pool is a great thing and if it already exists, there's no reason not to be using it. The last thing that I would say is the town referendum provided some feedback on what people are looking for, but it's impossible to say why the referendum failed without actually going to look in the town. So I heard the word survey mentioned. It's important to look at, we can speculate that it's because of Garfield and it's because of budget or it's because of those two things. But everybody does have their own opinion. Everybody does have their own reasons why they voted in favor or not in favor. I'm sure I speak for everybody in the room when I say if you guys want to come talk to us and ask us why we voted in a certain way, we'd be happy to share more information with you. And I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody on Facebook. If you go find people from the other side a little bit more as well, they'd be happy to talk to you. So just do a little bit of research on what the town actually voted for and why they actually voted for it before we go in much further into this project. I think that'll help unify people from all angles. Thank you.
Good evening. Wendy Holness, 31 Barkledge Drive. I'd like to thank everybody for all your hard work and it was a tremendous amount of work last year and a tough battle. So I thank you all for that. My opinions are that I, I do agree that we should have a architectural firm that specializes in pools. I think we should do it right this time. And I also believe that we should do it from the ground up. I don't want to fight the same battles that we fought last year. I'm tired of hearing about location. Maybe if we have some other architectural firms come in and core drill and find the same findings, you know, maybe we will, people will understand the, the issues. And I also don't believe that if you're going to go with a high ticket item like this, new construction of any kind, you'd put it in a, in an area that's substandard with remediation efforts. I, I just don't believe in that. You put things in the best location out of the shoot. As a taxpayer, I want return on my investment. I want 60 plus more years out of the pool. In terms of the open space issue and the aesthetics issue, and I, I do believe that the referendum probably did not pass mainly for money and also for location, but I, the money I understand, the location I don't. I believe that where the pool is today is a horrible location, but nobody knew 60 years ago, things were different then, but I believe it's a horrible location now with all of our appreciation for open space. All open space is not alike. It is not the same. I would like to regain that open space. I would like to put the pool where the core drills said it would be best by Garfield. Because Garfield is not, not to be a scenic overlook. That is not the goal of this project. It's not a very pretty street to begin with. So I would have no problem with a beautiful pool on Garfield Street and a beautiful splash pad. I also think you need to wrap some parameters around the pricing, maybe gold, silver, bronze kind of deal. I mean, at a, at a minimum, there should be a really nice splash pad in town. At a minimum, one very fancy big splash pad for the whole town. Maybe a middle of the road, bare essentials pool and a splash pad. And, and then maybe the third one is some bells and whistles. And while I'm not opposed to a year round, a pool or an aquatic center, I think they're fantastic ideas. I don't think they're going to fly and why set us up to fail. Money is tight with everything going on at the federal level, property value assessments, whatnot. It's not going to fly. It's setting us up to fail. So we have to be more, more conscious about the money. So that is my opinion. I thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody's left.
Nobody's on Zoom. Anybody else want to speak? We're good? Okay. Comments by committee members?
Tim, sorry, I'll go next.
Go ahead, Tim.
Just to respond to Mr. McCarthy thanking us to be here, we have no choice. We guess we're stuck here. One of us did have a choice and, and Ms. Navis, she resigned and unfortunately she, she had a time commitment constraint. So we do have a new member this kind of way joins us. So in case people want to know, she's, she's filling in for Sandy Navis. So congratulations or condolences, one or the other. I just want to say, I don't think, I don't think any of us are, are, are here so that we can swim in the pond and, and make that the new pool. That's not, not our intent for any of us. We, we all are here to to, to build a, a pool, a, a new pool or a refurbished pool. We, we all here for a pool. Where we put the pool, how we build the pool, where, what kind of pools we build, that's probably up to debate or, or up to, up to investigation. But we're, we're all here for the same reason. Otherwise we put a, we would have found somebody to get off this committee, I'm sure. We probably would have found some, some other committee to get onto and, and, and use it for our, our fourth Monday of the month now. I think we're all here for the same reason. I think just we have a lot of work to do ahead of us. I think we, we, we need to start from the ground up and, and look at all the options. I think the RFP process is the way to go. I think it's a process though. I think we can get the RFP and then from that we need to, we need to kind of narrow it down of what we want the RFP to say to, to what we want this, these firms to look at, because we can't just many of the speakers said, just say, you know, do something for us. We need to tell them what we want, what, what, what they want to do and where we want them to put their, their efforts into. This is a process. I think we, we tried to do it the fast way. We tried to do it the, the quick way. We tried to do it, let somebody else do all, do the work for us and, and sort of just kind of, in my opinion, rubber stamp it and say, okay, go ahead, this is what we want to do. And I think that didn't work. I think the, the, the public kind of saw through that and, and saw the, the holes that were left. And I think that's where we got us today. I think we need to, we need now to do the, the hard work. And it's a process. This is not going to happen overnight. This is not going to, there's not going to be a new pool by, by June. This is going to be, take, this is going to take a while and, and, and there's going to be inconvenience. And whenever we build a pool, there may be, there may be a time when there were summer, when one of the pools or two of the pools aren't available. And that's just the way it's going to be because that's just how these things happen. There, whenever you, you, you build a new, whatever, there, there's, there's times when things aren't available. And, and that's just the way, the way it goes. And, and we're going to have to just deal with that because that's where we are at this point. So I, I think we're in for, for the long road and, and I think we'll, we'll actually get there, but it's going to be a process.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here, everyone. Bernadette Conway. I am happy to be here. Because I love that pool. I literally grew up in that pool along with Eileen. I was a lifeguard there. I lived in that pool when I was little. And I want to see the kids of Newington get out of it what I got. A love of, so I, I have a love for swimming now and just being outside and I love that park. I grew up right next to that park. So I want to see what's best for, for this whole project, like everybody else here. And it is going to take time because this isn't going to be easy. Listening to what everybody has had to say, we're all over the place and we've got to narrow it down. And it sounds like it, it, we may even, and I'm just curious, can we make recommendations about safety when it comes to safety? That park was not, you know, it's not quite planned properly for it. So I'd like to even expand on things and make recommendations beyond the pool possibly. You know, where we have the buses now. Maybe that's where we should be considering parking and moving the buses somewhere. I, I mean, if we have to think about this kind of, all of this in advance, so we have answers for everybody, for everything, and we're not going to please everybody. We need to be looking at it in such an organic way that we're, we're going to, this is going to be a much larger project than just the pool. This is looking at a lot. So I don't know, I just wanted to throw that out there and see if that is even something that we, is that beyond our capacity on this committee?
Unfortunately, yes. We are charged with the pools and that's it.
And that's it.
With the parking and the road, that's, that's another department.
Okay. So we're listening to what everybody wants and we're not going to be able to address it. So we're already, you know, behind an eight ball, but we're going to do the best we can. And yeah, I'm just happy to be here and start from the beginning. And I'm going to be learning and asking a lot of questions. So if I have stupid questions like.
The only other thing we need to do is just make sure that we are cognizant of what the library is going to do. Because everybody's vying for that parking space, right? By the Garfield Street location. And with the size of the library addition, that would be only one parking lot left. So we just have to be cognizant of other things that are happening in that area.
Did I miss something? That, that hasn't passed, has it?
It's going to come up for, you know, they're going to, I'm just saying we have to be cognizant.
They're going to propose it to us.
They're going to propose it to the town.
So, so, so you're clear on, there'll be a presentation to council or tentatively scheduled for the last council meeting in February, which is the 25th of February. And that will help the, the LARC, the Library Renovation Committee to sort of make sure they're on the right track. And then there would be a future recommendation to council about whether to proceed to referendum. So it's coming, you know, in the next couple of months, I should say.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. Do you have anything else you want to say? Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll go. Well, I mean, I'm optimistic. We know the pools need to be fixed. People said that need to be fixed. Some people didn't get behind the vote last time and that's, they had different reasons for it. But we should do something. We should keep options open. We, I don't want to narrow ourselves down in the first meeting. You know, if it's do both the pools, have one splash pad, two splash pads, get rid of a pool. I mean, everything should be an option and we should all discuss every option. I'm not saying I'm for getting rid of a pool, but you need to think about the costs of everything. So I'm excited to see where this goes. I think we have a lot of options. I want to understand a little bit more about this RFP process probably and what that entails because I haven't, you know, been through that as much. And just, I know we talked about the high school pool a little bit. I know that's out of our purview. But it's news to me that they're shutting down the pool. Because I know somebody that knows a lot about Board of Education and they're not shutting down the pool. That's not happening. So I don't know where that comes from, but I asked that question specifically. So.
Yeah, I, I agree.
They just replaced the filter and that's, it's back running. So.
My turn, my turn. All right. I'll try, I like to do this kind of in order. So Bill, it's a, it's $2 million for a referendum, not three. Just, yeah, just so, just so you know. We have that there. To, to addressing to what happened with Bristol and Vernon, I'm definitely open to having that information given to whatever architect that we end up deciding. If it's a viable thing, why not? I know that when we had brought that up last year, there was, you can't just add a liner to like the current pool because of the issues with the water pressure on the concrete. I don't know if that's, that's plausible or what, but it's kind of why we want to get a new consulting firm, architect firm involved anyways. Last, like the last firm that we had used had, they had a relationship with the Parks and Rec, the head of Parks and Rec. And that was used as kind of to say that there's some sort of agenda or dark kind of like rationale as to why they wanted that particular pool plan. So I think a big push right now as to why we want something fresh is so that there's no kind of second doubts about why this particular firm is suggesting whatever they might be suggesting, if that makes sense. We want to keep it clean. We want to keep it, you know, we want to get, just eliminate that possibility of someone thinking there's foul play of some kind. With that being said, I have no problem giving all the past information and data and, and work that's been done in the past to whoever, you know, decides to take this charge from us. But I want to be clear that this is something completely fresh, completely new, and there's no, no hands in the pot or anything like that, so to speak. As far as the indoor facility, it sounds nice. I don't think it's realistic at all, to be honest. When it comes to one location, we're not going to put a huge building in the middle of the park. That would upset a lot of people. So then we would have to find a, a location off site. I, I don't see that happening. I definitely don't see it happening for less than $1.7 million. You know, I mean, if anything, it's probably going to be like three times as much if we're going to build an entire new building. So it is a nice idea. I just don't think it's realistic at all. As far as like what direction we should go with the RFP, I think that just in general, whoever, you know, when we send it out, I think that we should say these are what we have in town. We want to get possibly two splash pads if that works out. Tell us what you think. You know, I mean, I think that just, you know, having their opinions is probably the best thing to do. So we can get a fresh evaluation of what we're working with. Because I think if we, if we limit the scope of what they can do as far as like providing us a plan, that's exactly that we're limiting them. So, and I'd rather get the, the full expertise of whoever they have on staff to evaluate what this town needs at that time, at this time. Other than that, I'm also happy to be here. I know this is going to take a while, but we have time. And ideally, I'm hoping by at least the end of the year, we have something somewhat solid. And then as we head into 2026, I don't know what year it is, hopefully by then we can start talking about actually implementing some of these things or maybe even piecemealing the project together, present and giving it to council. So maybe council can do things under their purview and then they can just start kind of checking things off of checklist, ideally. And then thank you for coming. I really appreciate it.
Okay. I had a few things. Someone talked about that there wasn't any room for spectators. Normally, when you go to a swim meet at an outdoor pool, spectators are on the outside of the fence and that's a safety reason. They don't let parents and whoever run around on the pool deck because it causes a problem. In the past, when there's been swim meets at Mill, they bring in bleachers, the portable bleachers, and they set them around the outside and that works. And as far as parking goes, I know that there are a lot of cars and things like that, but we have hosted rather large events at Mill, the Water Lantern Festival and things like that, where there's some offsite parking that you can get on a bus and cart yourself over there and, and it works. The other thing was somebody mentioned about. The other thing was somebody mentioned about the Children's Hospital and the possibility of a school and a sports center over there. Well, that would be lovely. We don't own that property, so we don't really have a say in what people can do for it unless the town comes, you know, hits the lottery. I don't think we're even going to buy it. It's a lot of money. The Vernon Pool, as far as the pool liner, the problem with that, when the architect looked at it, was that the infrastructure of the pool itself was crumbling and they didn't think that, that, that particular structure of Mill would hold up long enough to invest in a liner and be able to do that. And I was never told that, that it was guaranteed for 20 years. I thought it was way, way, way shorter than that. And the, as far as the indoor pool at the high school closing, I talked to them fairly recently because they just replaced some of the parts there. And I asked them about closing it and what was going on and they said there was no intention of closing it at all. So I don't know, somebody's got, I don't know, but hopefully it's not going to close. It's, it's well-loved. Other than that, I don't have anything to say other than thank you for coming and hope to see you on the 24th. Anything else anybody has to say? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.